Well, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Lively voice. Y'all are gonna speak about it. You scare me when you get too quiet. Just welcome everybody here tonight. We're so thankful that we live in our community. Tipton's a great place to live and to work and be a part of. And we're just glad you came out tonight in spite of the rain. We're gonna start out today with, well, of course, I've called it to work. We're gonna start out with a public hearing. David, I'm gonna go ahead and do the prayer. Mr. Attorney, can I do that? Can we go ahead and have the prayer and the pledge before we do the public hearing?
Well, I think we need to start the public hearing on time there, so people will...
So we'll just start the public hearing, David.
Let's do that.
Let's start the public hearing. And I'll turn that over to you, Mr. Attorney.
Mayor, we've got a couple of public hearings. And the first one is on our CDVG development block grant. This hearing is required for us to let the public know what we have decided to do with those funds and what we expect over the coming months. As you all know, we applied for a CDVG grant in the spring. We were notified last month that we did receive it. It's for the Leibord Rogers Senior Center. It's worth $500,000. It's for the... Goes toward the expansion and renovation of the center. And briefly, in total, what we've got is a project that's running out of about $980,000. The funds that we've been able to put together for it consist of a SLOSP four allocation that was voted in by the voters at $750,000. We actually collected about $550,000. In addition, we've got this $500,000 CDVG grant. So that money will go toward the expansion and renovation of the center. We also have $500,000 that was voted on by the citizens for our SLOSP five, and that would be phase two of the project. It's going to be toward drainage and parking. And I believe we'll even have, if we need to, we'll have also funds within the SLOSP five drainage project fund to be able to make sure that gets completed. It serves about 1,100 people going through the center all month. So it's a super worthwhile project, and we're really excited about it. We'll be meeting over the next month or two trying to get everything moving up and ready to go.
Thank you, Ron.
You obviously heard what Ms. Ron was saying about the block grant. Is there anyone that would like to speak on that issue? Yeah, I see no one would like to speak on that. That public hearing is closed.
Yes, that public hearing is now closed. We now have the text amendment for the Tipton Historic Preservation Manual. If you'll speak to that, Mr. Attorney.
All right, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to inform the public that the written public hearing procedures and the City of Tipton's standards for exercising its own powers atop of the Georgia Conflict of Laws are available to hand out as well as posted for public review. We have two matters under consideration. One has to do with a text amendment to the Land Development Code. And the other one has to do with a text amendment or revisions to the Tipton Historic Preservation Manual. I'm gonna read both of these items first, and if anyone has, likes to speak in favor of it. The first text amendment is to the City of Tipton Historic Preservation Manual to consider revisions that would provide for permitting of banners and stick signs in the commercial areas of the historic district and permitting channel lighting and LED lighting within the commercial areas of the historic district. Just so everybody's familiar, when we respond to commercial areas of the historic district, we're talking about zoning districts. So residential and residential professional would not be within the commercial areas, but neighborhood commercial and on up would be commercial area of the historic district. The second matter that will be talked about, the text amendment to the City of Tipton Land Development Code, which regulates multiple message signs and will allow for direct lighting in the commercial areas of the historic district upon obtaining a certificate of approval by the City of Tipton Historic Preservation Commission. I'm gonna ask if anyone in conflict of interest questions, even though this is something that has been presented by staff. Has any of the council members, his application, has any opponents or applicants contributed at least $250 to any of the campaigns for election during the past two years? Do you or any members of family-owned property that would be impacted by these classification applications, whether it be a positive or negative impact?
No.
Now, let me ask you a question about that, Mr. Attorney. I own property, commercial property in the historic district. Is that what you mean, David?
I didn't say you wrong.
Well, they would... That would impact...
It would impact my tenants, I would think. I mean, it will not have a direct relation to me the way I vote, but I just need to clarify that.
Of course, it's an interesting issue. Generally, we're talking about rezoning when we're talking about these types of classifications. This is basically a sign, or this is regulated a sign, in unfortunate areas of LDC and HPC manual.
And you have three members. You're now on this council, but we have two who are giving that's on the board.
That's true. Maybe a president, Mr. Attorney, should recognize that there are property-owned councils.
If you would, if you have property, the impact of this, say, you know, if you do, let's get that on the record. And then we get, you know, when we get to a vote on the issue, we can look at it a little closer. But right now, we're taking public input. I don't think it's necessary at this point to disqualify anybody, because we're not taking a vote at this time. So I think Councilman Smith, you have property, and you're okay with that.
I have property. And I as well.
And I don't have property, but I have another question.
Okay.
In reading my notes and studying my notes for this meeting, I read and studied carefully the notice for the public meeting that we are now in, okay? And I read something that I did not know. And this is new information to me, and it may be new information to the general public. And I will read this. It's in the last paragraph of the public notice section of the hearing of Tipton itself. And it says, pursuant to official code of Georgia 366783, any opponent of a proposed amendment to the City of Tipton Land Development Code. Now, let me say that we've only amended the Land Development Code once. I think since we passed it, that had to do with billboards on the I-75 corridor. But I think that's the only time we've amended the Land Development Code. It just says, an opponent to the City of Tipton Land Development Code who has made campaign contributions aggregating $250 or more to a local government official of the local government, which shall consider the amendment within two years of the date of the application, shall be required to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respective local government, showing the name and official position of the candidate of the government official to whom the contributions were made, and the dollar amount and description made by the opponent of the local government official during the five... Just a second. But they had to do it five days before this public hearing. Let me turn over there. Within five calendar days prior to the scheduled hearing. Now, that was new to me until this weekend. And so I wonder if there's anyone... The public, I don't think, knows that if they contributed to any of these campaigns that they had to file a notice with us five days ago.
Well, that is to say law, and that's why we put it in the notice. So anyone that does want to speak or oppose a proposed amendment needs to go ahead and make that disclosure.
Five days ago.
Five days ago.
Well, it's an interesting legal position we're in, I think. And I guess that the... I haven't had anyone make who's opposing this. And I don't even know that we know who's opposing it in this audience. I mean, you don't know who is opposing it. I don't know, but it's an interesting question. It concerns me.
When we set up the public, you know, notice of public hearing, naturally, where, you know, people who want to come and speak either for or against the proposed amendment hopefully reach the disclosure requirement.
Right.
And that's all we can do, by no including notice of the public hearing. It is to say law.
Right, but it is not the state law for just a planning and zoning, is it? It's just a state law for the Land Development Code?
Text amendments to your zoning issues. So this is what...
So it would be to all zoning issues?
It would be. If it's a zoning decision, then if councils wanted to take a vote on something of that nature, then it needs to be... That disclosure has to be made as far as contributions.
And that would also be true, something we voted on at the last call meeting, of planning and zoning issue.
That's correct. And it's in all our public notices when it comes to a planning and zoning issue. That must be law.
My knowledge prior to the study of this weekend is that it was my position to disclose if someone, as a council member, had, you know, contributed. But I was not aware of the fact that it was someone else, a contributor, who has disclosed. So that's information for me, and maybe it is for other people.
Okay. We have one last question. Do you or any members of your family have an interest in a business that would be impacted by this classification application, whether it be a positive or negative impact? And again, assuming, you know, from a parent.
I'll be darned. My daughter-in-law rents a building where she has a hair salon. I don't know if that has anything to do with it.
And my business is in the historic district as well.
So with those disclosures, then we'll go on with the...
Yeah.
And I've got ten, so feel free.
I'll be on that. You have to move mine. At this time, I'm gonna ask Mr. Burke Pro, or Prime Minister of Record, to discuss these proposed amendments as been the staff recommendation.
I just can remember all the things about the introduction of it. You remember from the previous meeting, we had a discussion about it, that there were basically two parts to it. First was relating directly to the Land Development Code. The other was changes that were being made in the Historic Preservation Commission Manual. The first basic part of it was for temporary signage. It came out to allow a banner not exceed 24 square feet in size, with commercials on it only, and up to, what was it? Five political signs of ten square feet. That's why I make sure my notes are correct. In the historic district also. That is upon approval by the city. It also allows for some limited use of backlighting, not... That would be channel lighting, which is another choice of words. And if you ask for a definition of that, that's where light actually goes out of work. Only that part of the light, not the whole frame of the sign. That would also be after the receiving of a COA. And from time to time, when necessary, that we consider the LEDs. That was the first part. And then the second part of that would be changes to the historic... Changes to the LDC itself, which basically would show the same thing in the historic district. And also correct a situation in the Land Development Code relating to, we don't have anything related to multi-message signs. So we address that at the same time, because an LED is a multi-message sign. And the recommendation of staff were to allow, there could be only changes on those signs every... Ten seconds. Is that right? Ten seconds? Ten seconds is what it was there. Ten seconds. Which, a lot of discussion, as y'all remember, about struggling with flashing. But that was the maximization, staff at the time, that is the maximization here.
I thought in the recommendation, you changed the 10 seconds to five after the planning and zoning.
That's... It was what it is. Yes, that's correct. I got it backwards. You're absolutely correct. It was originally ten. It went to five. It was the longer one. We wanted a less... You want to be able to show the sign more, and that's why you informed anybody to show the sign for a period of time. Any questions? And that was the way we presented it, staff.
I just want to let everybody know, these ordinances were initially drafted probably about 30 days ago. It has been a workshop before the city council. They've had questions. They've also asked some concerns. Tonight, we are going to be asking for public input on the proposed ordinances as was recommended by staff. With your public input, then again, you know, council will take that, will do input into consideration. First, I would like to ask, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the proposed amendments to the Land Development Code and the HPC manual? When you say for, as the staff is presenting. That's correct. Just to, you know, for everyone's information, we are a certified local government, and we have been informed by the Georgia Department of Historic Division of the Department of Natural Resources that prior to the council taking action, these are required to be reviewed by the Department of Natural Resources. So tonight, we're taking input, you know, from the public as drafted, knowing that this is going to have to be reviewed by the Department of Natural Resources before the council will be able to take action on it. So, again, if there's anyone who'd like to speak in favor of the proposed text amendments, let me know.
Is that the next step in this process, is for it to go to the state?
It will, basically, as everybody probably knows here, that this has really been a work in progress. Staff has developed what Mr. Crowe has presented as a proposed ordinances revised to the Land Development Code and the Historic Preservation Manual. As I said, council did workshop this, and I think that they had numerous questions and concerns about as it was drafted. Again, we are going to be presenting to the Department of Natural Resources, you know, what ultimately will be a proposal from council, and that's what the DNR will pass on. We're hoping that tonight, if anyone has additional input, either for changes, as Mr. Crowe had outlined, or opposition to those changes that Mr. Crowe outlined, then we'd like to hear from that, you know, from you tonight. Now, the way this will work, when the event council decides to make some changes of what Mr. Crowe has recommended, either based upon anything they might receive back from the Department of Natural Resources from their review recommendations, or from maybe input that they received from you tonight, then that will, again, have to be developed into proposed ordinances. Once those changes are made, again, they'll have to be presented to the DNR for review. And according to our ordinances, they'll have to be reviewed by plan and zoning if changes are made by council. So it's a process that we have to take, go through, in order to comply with, you know, certified local government, as well as comply with our ordinances by letting plan and zoning review and changes that are made to what Mr. Crowe has proposed. So it's... Unfortunately, it's more of a long, involved process, and I'm sure what council would like, because I know everyone's anxious trying to get some resolutions to this. But actually, council's interested in getting much information as they can before making a informed decision. So with all that said, and like I said, unfortunately, this is quite a prolonged process. Assuming the council, you know, wants to make some revisions, it's going to have to go to DNR with that plan and zoning, if they change what Mr. Crowe has recommended. Yes, ma'am?
Just to make sure, I want to say, for what y'all are recommending for LED signs, for the LDC, is whoever has LED signs, they can scroll, they can flash, they can blink, but they have to wait, they have to change every five seconds?
Right now, the way the Land Development Code is as drafted, does not allow flashing, blinking, scrolling lights. That's what Mr. Crowe's staff recommendation was. Now, I know...
To allow or not to allow?
Not to allow flashing, blinking, scrolling signs citywide. Now, I know council at workshop had a concern about that restriction. Now, unfortunately, since we are workshopping that, those changes have not been made. But since we had the... This was a scheduled public hearing on the ordinances as drafted. We have to go through with that public hearing, although everybody understands that as it is drafted now, flashing, blinking, scrolling lights are not permitted based upon the way the ordinances are drafted. And that's one of the, you know, issues that we could hear on this public hearing. I do know that, you know, council has problems with that provision. So that's why I'm saying that I know that based upon input tonight, I can see that these changes are probably, you know, what we're proposing tonight is not going to be, more than likely, the final draft that's going to be presented to the Department of Natural Resources for their review and to plan and zoning.
And then the... The twenty-four square foot signs and the five political signs was only for NC zoning and commercial downtown? Is that correct? Is it not included R2?
That's correct. As is drafted now.
As is drafted now.
The five, the stick signs and the banners on the commercial areas of the historic district. As drafted now.
So let me see if I got Burke Pro right. Whatever happens here, whatever changes are made, whatever changes are made, it will be drafted, whether it's by what the staff recommended or what the council changes this entry, and what's just drafted. It then goes to DNR. You're not gonna have two different things going up, where you go to DNR with what the staff, and then it goes back, and...
What we're proposing now is that, once, you know, council has made a determination, there's no... When we get to these agenda items tonight, these ordinances, I will be asking council to table those items, you know, to a date certain, so we can have the opportunity to take what council wants, present it to DNR, and get their review and recommendations. Fortunately, like I said, since we're a certified local government, that's their procedures we have to follow as certified local government. So based upon what I've heard at the workshop, maybe what we hear tonight, I anticipate council will want to make changes to the proposal to the ordinances that Mr. Crowe has presented, which we will then present to DNR. Then come back with their review and recommendations, let council take those into consideration, make a final... Based upon those recommendations or not take those recommendations, take the final draft of the ordinance to plan and zoning, which we have to do according to our ordinances, and then bring it back before council within another public hearing based upon what those changes would be. And it's, like I say, it's been an involved process, and quite frankly, I did not know that two weeks ago, that the Department of Natural Resources had to review or make recommendations since we are a certified local government. They let us know that. So we do have to go through that process.
I don't know how they think.
I think they must have seen it on TV. I don't know. But they did. We actually got an email...
Wish everybody dope.
I don't know. But anyway, they gave an email from us saying, you know, you do have to send these up for our review as a certified local government, so we want to comply with that. But again, you know, I know there's changes that need to be made, particularly, I think somebody might have attended the workshop and understand that council has some concern about some of the provisions that Mr. Crowe has recommended. But since we did advertise this as a public hearing on proposed ordinances, by law, we have to carry through the public hearing as the staff has recommended it. But I would anticipate that once we get through tonight and council, you know, makes a determination based upon everything they hear and the information tonight, or, you know, recommendations from the Department of Natural Resources, we will get a final okay from the city council, put it on paper, present the plan and zoning, and then, again, we'll have another public hearing on those, on what council was proposing to adopt after we've gone through that process. I do know that according to DNR, they indicated it would be about a 30-day review process. I know everyone's anxious. I'm gonna ask them if they'll put the pedal to the metal and maybe, you know, get us a little review quicker, because I know that this has been... It's been long drawn out. Everybody's had a lot of time into it, including, you know, everybody in the public, as well as council. It's a difficult decision, a lot of issues. So, as I said, council is really looking to get all the information it can and make a informed decision. We certainly can. Would anyone like to speak in favor of Mr. Crowe's proposal in particular?
Yeah, Charles Sire, lives Fort 10, North Park Avenue.
Charles, you'll have a total of five minutes. I've got your little name right here. And I do believe the city manager will pick up on that as well. Feel free.
Charles Sire, lives Fort 10, under North Park Avenue. And I have business in this district for over 25 years. Our business plan is for someone who's interested in historic preservation of the city. I believe that the proposals that the staff has recommended would provide relief to business plan in Tipton and to have a small impact on the historic district. And so I think I can include those without any problem. And we can say with the flashing and blinking, it would make sense to allow that outside of the historic district. I don't have any problem with that. So if you want to change the LDC to allow flashing and blinking outside of the historic district, not within the historic district, but outside. My other concern is that this proposal keeps the residential nature of RP because there are those who live there and like to have that as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Anyone else like to speak in favor of Mr. Crowe's staff recommendation in this session? All right, I'll hear anyone in opposition.
My name is Hal Backsler.
Hal, you'll have the same five minutes.
I'm at 225, I think it is, Second Avenue. We just purchased that building, which is downtown commercial. My concern is that we live in the year 2013, and decisions that are going to be made today, if they're not made looking long-term, then you're gonna have to be readdressing these issues, because technology is getting more and more involved in the moving, scrolling, flashing, different types of things. And there'll be videos and all types. In fact, there already are. Title Max has got one that's like that, and theirs has got one that's like that. These are high-dollar, over $200,000 or $300,000 a sign. And so that technology is here, and it's only gonna get deep. Now, as far as the outskirts, I think everybody's in agreement that they should have it. Downtown commercial in the historic district should have the same opportunities that anyone else in the City of Tipton has. Because it... First of all, I'm really not sure how DNR has anything to do with historic, but obviously it does. I thought they dealt with squirrels and deer and that type of thing. But however, I don't understand exactly how it is that you're gonna be able to keep downtown in the 1930s or the 1940s or 1910s or whatever. That's not gonna happen. And it's either gonna happen today, looking forward, or either at some point, it'll be readdressed again. And in the meantime, the businesses that are downtown in the commercial district, I can see somewhat about the RP. Okay, fine. But I have no... I don't understand how it is that somebody that's in a residential has anything to do with signage. Now, okay, if we want facade, the aesthetics, the way a building looks, I'm 41,000 percent. I'm just like that. That's the reason I buy the historic buildings. I like the main thing, just like they were. However, I don't want them run down. I don't want something to look shabby just because it's historic. We want it to look good. And it's the same thing as far as the advertising for the signs. That is the only way that you can make a successful business. Mr. Flatt, that y'all know, he told me, here's what he said about signs. He said, "A business without a sign is a sign of no business." That's the way he put it. "A business without a sign is a sign of no business." And so with that in mind, we would like to see things scrolling, flashing, and all of that, it's gonna be on the outside, the same thing that was on the downtown... of that, it's gonna be on the outside, the same thing that's on the downtown commercial district going, okay? And if there are anything that they would want to, if he maybe too much flashing or something of that nature, that could be controlled, but as far as just doing away with any of the scrolling, I think that most everybody would be opposed to it. It's in the downtown commercial district that wants to do business, so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Attorney, can I say something before the next person comes up? Because Hal did bring up the DNR. I became aware of the DNR when the Colony Bank started trying to do the ICE House, because I was the first one to say, "I'll let DNR in Atlanta run what we do down here." However, however, we are, what is it, Julie, we're the Certified Historic Preservation Council.
The State Historic Preservation Office is under the umbrella of the Department of Natural Resources.
Right, right. So they do, and we do need to send that there to them. But we did get a letter back from, I can't remember the lady's name, but she said we wanna park with y'all. It's not like that to me, and I took it all wrong, started with myself. But I think this is gonna go pretty smoothly. But y'all just wanna add that. Now, sorry, the next person, please. Mention your name, and you'll have five minutes.
Hey, my name is Allen Fie, and I'm from Red Bird, to the corner of Central and Main Street. I eliminated about five or six, I forget which one I had, of the banners with one LED sign. Now, it advertises for me 24/7, and it really makes my business look a lot better than all those having banners I have. I'm gonna speak on the historic district, but I don't have a dog in the hunt. I'm just up here on commercials, I have a baby too, and I would really like to keep my LEDs up, scrolling, blinking, flashing, whatever. Thank you.
Thank you, Allen.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition to the proposed testimony?
Mr. Attorney, may I make a comment? Since there seems to be a little bit of confusion about the certified local government, can I just let folks know what that does for Tipton? I mean, it's more than you have a designation, but it allows you to understand what the designation is. I got some information from, just a quick paragraph I'd like to read from the George Municipal Association explaining what that is, is that okay?
I have your phone.
Okay. Just to let folks know what that is, and this is from the George Municipal Association. It said, "The benefit of becoming a certified local government, or CLG eligibility, it gives us eligibility for federal historic preservation grant funds, and Tipton over the years has received probably millions of dollars in historic preservation grants. If we don't have that certified local government designation, it wipes out our ability to receive any historic preservation grant, so that's very important. It also gives us the opportunity to review local nominations by the National Historic Places prior to consideration by the Georgia National Register Review Board. And as you know, we've got several districts that are on the National Register of Historic Places. We have the commercial downtown district, and then several years ago, our residential and RP, the neighborhood sort of surrounding downtown, was put on the National Register. And that certified local government designation helped us in that process. It also gives opportunity for technical assistance and improved communication and coordination among local, state, and federal preservation activities. So that CLG designation is extremely important to Tipton, it's paid off for us in the past with regard to receiving grant funds, and will pay off for us with future grant funds that relate to historic preservation. So we don't want to mess with that CLG designation because there is a pot of money, albeit now it's very small, but there is a pot of money out there that can provide future assistance for us in grants and that kind of thing. So that's why that designation is extremely important. It's a state law that if we are going to maintain that designation, that CLG designation, we must involve the State Historic Preservation Office, which is again, under that umbrella of DNR, in anything that we do. Also, and just another last little tidbit, and then I'll be quiet. In this G- oh, we can't, I heard that. He said, "I don't know." He's probably right. In this George Municipal Association publication, I got this straight from their website, I just went and did a little Googling. I do wanna read one thing, and then that'll be it. Historic preservation does enhance property values. Studies in Savannah, Rome, Athens, and Tipton, this was what I found was very interesting, and Tipton, have found that properties in designated historic districts appreciate and value more than similar properties in non-designated areas. So that's not my words, that's the professionist's words. So I do want you to take that into consideration.
And thank you, Julie. And for those in the crowd that don't know that, most of the historic district is in Julie's district. So she's very able around this and keeps up with it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Can you get it in two minutes and thirty seconds?
I have one comment. I get your mother.
Oh, yes, please.
And that was one thing that concerned me. Rob found the answer to today, and it may concern some of you, so let me tell you what he found out. I raised the question, would changing the historic preservation guidelines have any effect on how we're being designated in the two areas as a downtown historic district on the National Register or the residential historic district, which is on the National Register? And Ms. Burns indicated by email today that it would not. So that it would not affect, changing the historic manual will not affect that inclusion on those registers.
Okay, thank you, Mary Ann.
Your honor, thank you for the comments, so I asked.
Yes, the public hearing is closed. Now, we're ready for the next, the last public hearing, which is the text amendment to the City of Land Development Code to regulate multiple message signs. This is something in addition to what you're saying.
Listen, Mayor, I'm gonna combine both of those. Let me just address that one more time, make sure that nobody has any additional questions. We had one other item, I kinda combined both of these, but this has the text amendment to the City of Tipton Land Development Code to regulate multiple message signs and to allow for direct lighting in the commercial areas of the historic district upon a consent of Tipton's approval by the City of Tipton Historic Preservation Commission. Basically, this particular text amendment regulates multiple message signs, which is the signs that change the message and the timeframe on which those messages are changed. Again, these were going to be permitted in the city limits, and as to the historic district, it was going to allow for direct lighting, particularly LED and channel lighting only. That was Mr. Crowe's recommendation. Right now, in the historic district, according to its manual, only indirect lighting is permitted. I think a lot of these have been addressed already, but does anyone like to speak in favor of that particular amendment to Land Development Code, which will prevent direct lighting in the historic district, such as channel lighting? And then on the issue of multiple message signs, does anyone like to speak either for or against that particular text amendment, as I commented on those issues?
Okay, so the hearing is closed as well. Now, I'm gonna call the people to order, and I'm gonna do something that years ago, I think the first time I ran for office, I think 1990, I ran for a county spot. In 1992, I ran against five other people for a spot on the, at that time, it was called the City Commission. And I'll never forget, Leroy Rogers was the chairman, and any of us that were running for office that came in there to sit down here at the meeting or whatever, he would always introduce and recognize us, and that's what I want to do tonight. Because you know what? It takes a lot to get out and want to run, and want to be a part of your community and do something. I mean, you really set aside from everybody else, and we have two gentlemen here tonight that are running for District Four, is that right, Mr. Mayor?
One.
District One? Well, I knew that, District One. That's your district.
No, it's not your district.
I'm sorry.
I'm not running against you.
District One. And I'd just like to reckon, and I'll do it in alphabetical order, Mr. Jimmy Carson, who's sitting right here, Mr. Wes Layers, who's sitting, raise your hand, Wes, right there. And just thank y'all both for being here, and we mean that, we really do, and glad to see you. And I wish both of you luck. May the best man win, and the best man doesn't win, we still support whoever wins. I thank you both good men. Now, I've asked Mr. Parent if he will oblige to us in the prayer, and he said he would. Once we finish the prayer, we're gonna stand up, and we're gonna face this wonderful, beautiful flag that represents our wonderful America, and we're gonna do a pledge of allegiance. So, Mr. Parent, will you pray with me?
Lord, thank you for our free country and blessing us to be born in the greatest country in the world. Everyone here tonight loves their community and helps us make the best decisions for our community. Be with everyone here in the room tonight, everyone watching at home, and their families. Lord, we pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Grant.
I pledge my allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Have you seated? I know I've got a veteran sitting here just to my left who was in the Vietnam War, just out of curiosity. Raise your hand if you're a veteran of foreign wars down here. I wanna thank everybody. Y'all, we got Veterans Day coming up here before long, and you know, we've got, right now, as we sit here in this free country, we have our Americans out fighting in other countries for freedom, for other people's freedom, because we know how nice it is that we have the freedoms that we have. So tonight, we can obey and say a quick prayer. If you don't believe in the prayer, just say a kind word that God will be with those men and women overseas and be with their families as they wake their safe return, and thank God for this country. We're gonna move on now to the approval of the council agenda. I'll need a motion second on that.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Second?
Okay, a motion, second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, do we need to remove the two ordinances, line item number seven and eight of the agenda at table X?
I think we'll, when we get to those on one or two, I will ask you to record those on the table and get those on the agenda. We're gonna put it on there.
Thank you, you're the best, good operator. Okay, no further discussion? All in favor, please, sit if I will raise your right hand, saying aye. Aye. That is unanimous, Miss Ronan. Now, we do some fun things up here. We have something that we've been doing a good bit lately. Thanks to Miss Ronan and Larry. We'd like to do the employee of the month presentation. Oh, I have to come back. Well, Chris, come on up. This is a perfect one.
I have a hottie in the back, she doesn't know why they're watching. She's just coming to visit and educating.
I saw her, this woman back there. Employee of the month. In recognition of your outstanding work performance, and for going above and beyond, the mayor, city council, and city manager recognized Angela Studdins as employee of the month of September of 2013. Let's give her a hand.
No, yeah, she don't mind, she don't mind. I know my creed, you ain't coming, but I hope it be that much more special. I just wanted to let y'all know that when we think of Angela, we think of an unslung hero. She's a type of person that does substantial unrecognized contributions. She's our public works and solowation utilities custodian, she's been with us for a little over eighteen years now, and she has big smile on her face, that's pretty much how she gets on a daily basis. And you ever seen somebody so happy to give them something else to do? Anyway, she's a person who, her well-doings are unknown and unacknowledged yet, we can't do a day without her. She's out for a day, everybody's asking, "Where's Angela?", and she's gonna be back, she needs to come back. She's the type of person that takes a job and is thrilled that you've given her a new task. She takes on every job with enthusiasm and a gratefulness, and that is why we'd like to nominate Ms. Angela Studdins for employee of the year.
Second or third generation city employee?
Second.
Second. And she does a fantastic job, and thank you for nominating her. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have something we do every month, and I like to remind everybody that's sitting out there that we work for y'all. You know, even if you might be from the county tonight, which I don't think anybody that I see lives in the county, but we're still a community. So we're up here in public service, the five, service, the four, the five of us, and so we have a section that we call Citizen Input, where anybody can come up and talk to us about anything. Don't we give them five minutes on that, Larry? Yeah, say five. And so if there's anybody in the audience that wants to come up and speak, then this is your opportunity to do so, Citizen Input. Now, when you come up, please mention your name and where you live.
Darlene Filter, I live in the Nato Five Range. This is the 25th year of the historic preservation of the historic district when it was designated. We are very proud of our historic district and the changes we have seen, and that's because the local government has stood behind us, has recognized us, has worked with us, and has also seen increases in tax on guess what about. Before it was designated, there was about 75% of the downtown business buildings were empty. We were a ghost skeleton town. In fact, I moved here probably five years before that, and I asked someone, "Where's downtown?", and they said, "Well, you don't wanna go downtown shopping, you wanna shop at the mall." And I just was sick in my heart to think that you could have a city with no heart. And that's what Tipton Historic District is. We are the hearts of the town, and it has grown from there. We will be having a celebration to honor what all's been accomplished before the year end, because it is our 25th year, and we just appreciate all that you have done. And we also want you to kind of, as you're looking at your sign ordinances, to remember that, that yes, signs do change, times do change, but they're transitioned. And what we're proposing is a long-term solution to what might be a short transit problem. That's why the historic district was founded. It was a long-term solution to having a ghost town go away. And as it's growing in the new streetscapes and the buildings and the new owners of buildings and the people that buy it because of the look and where they're located, they understand the value of being with us. They buy it because of what's there. But then to change it destroys what's already happened. And so it's a fragile balance, and we appreciate everybody's efforts in the RP's, the commercials, the residential's, and everybody, we all benefited because of that designation, and that was not an easy thing for anyone to do. And to have us listed on the state website, that most of us weren't even aware we were listed, I knew we were talked about, I knew people came to look, I knew people were using this as an example, but somehow it is on the web, which is your new media now, you know, that's where people are finding their new business people, and they knew, "Where am I gonna go look, where am I gonna travel? What do you have to offer? I've gotta come to Tipton, or I'm passing through more of Florida, is there anything in Tipton to do?" Our websites are important because we started with the historic district and we saved the heart. And so we thank you for that. We want you just to be aware of the 25th year, and just stay tuned, there'll be more. Thank you.
Thanks, Darlene. If I could just amplify what Darlene just said. I can remember, my grandfather was a vice president of the Bank of Tipton, which is now, I think, we're, I don't even know what bank it is, some bankers may know. Right across from mine, up to, what's mine? Who?
Bank of America.
Bank of America. And y'all, I can remember going out and seeing my grandfather, and we're probably talking about maybe the 70s, 80s at the bank, and before Harold Harper bought that building and did a private-public experience there to give us the mine city complex. I can remember drunks hanging out of the windows. I can remember the old cloth curtains in there blowing outside, it was horrible. It was like a ghost town. And then we are proud of our downtown now. Heck, I've even invested in downtown. I mean, that's what it's all about. So Darlene, thank you for coming up and saying that. Anybody else have any citizens come in, citizens input? Citizens input? Seeing none, we'll...
Well, let me, all I want to do is to commend each and every one of you. I mean, like you said before, somebody has to get out and go and politic and take time out of your day and to do the things, and you get very little credit, I'm telling you. You can look into rant and rage if you think you do, or you're just looking at rant and rage right there, and it makes no difference which way you go. You're going to offend somebody. Somebody's, you know, but, but it's like, like Star Trek. Spock on Star Trek said, he said, "The need of the many outweighs the need of the one for the few." And that's what I think that you've done, and I think that that's what you care about. You've got to, to be able to put forth the effort that y'all put forward, take the criticism. I used to be in law enforcement. And I can tell you, Danny, anybody that's in law enforcement, they can, they can tell you that it's a thankless job most of the time. And so I just, I want to say thank you to the council and to the mayor for the efforts that y'all put forth and you have over the years, because Tifton is a great place. And I've always loved Tifton. I've been around Tifton, through Tifton, in Tifton most of all my life, you know, and I've always liked Tifton. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Any other citizens input? If there's not, we're going to move right on. Thank you for everybody that has spoken. Y'all just remain to stay with us. The meetings get a little more boring as we go forward. So, and you two, you two guys that are running, remember that. Sometimes you won't even sleep the feet away.
So you want to stay?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, approval of the minutes. This will be approval of the minutes of the September ninth regular meeting and the September nineteenth workshop and call meeting. Do I have a motion on that?
I move that we approve them, but I have a slight change to make in the September ninth regular meeting.
Okay.
All right. It's on page thirteen of our agenda, but it states that...
Mr. Mayor, if I may, we have a motion, we need a second. And then we have a discussion.
Oh, this will be part of the discussion? But that's part of a motion, though. She wants to change something.
Well, I said I had...
She wants to make a change, so that needs to be part of a motion.
The correction I would make is that it says that Councilmember Fazia asked that section seven point seventeen A of the LVC be removed. What I recommended was that one sentence from seven point seventeen A be removed. And that was the portion of scrolling.
If the sentence begins, no sign, shall have link in place, you're scrolling.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, I believe you will accept it, but I'm making that change. Okay, that's the motion. Do I have a second? Motion?
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any further discussion? Tina, all in favor, please sit if I will raise your right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous, Ms. Ronan. Does anybody have any water out there?
Here's some chewing gum.
Y'all might have smacked chewing gum. I am thirsty now. Well, we're moving now to our consent agenda. Consent agenda, we, excuse me, we group several things together. By doing so, as our boss is here, we don't want you to think that we're just taking this loosely and just voting on something in a list. These things are talked about in our workshops. They may be discussed through emails from time to time, one-on-one with each other. So we have looked at all this stuff that's on consent agenda. I will now ask the council, is there any of this consent agenda that you would like removed before we make a motion? Seeing none, then I'll accept a motion for items two through five.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the consent agenda items two, four, and five as submitted.
Okay. Second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? You win the prize. All in favor, please sit if I will raise your right hand, saying aye. Aye. And that is unanimous, Ms. Ronan. We move now into the resolutions. Item number six is the resolution allowing the city manager to sign annexation petitions on behalf of the city of Tifton. I think this is self-explanatory. Larry, if you want to get up and say anything, please.
Yes, Mayor, just for the general public, there's been requests from property owners to annex into the city of Tifton, primarily the East Gate subdivision, Alfer Lake Road and that area. This annexation will also include the inner landfill, which jointly owned by the city of Tifton and Tifton County.
Okay, Larry, I'll accept a, I'll accept a motion.
I make a motion to accept the resolution, allowing the city manager to sign annexation petitions on behalf of the city of Tifton.
Second?
I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please sit if I will raise your right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous. Next item is the ordinances, and that's number seven and eight, I guess you'll speak to them.
Mayor, I think I would recommend that these two tables, the big services we have to get reviewed by the Department of Natural Resources. I think the issue is whether we win, whether you want to consider these. Again, I'm in mind, council, that there's a specific timeframe, it's generally thirty days for DNR review. I don't know if they can do an equivalent of that. I think if we look at the clean wing, I think I would recommend we do since we're not in position to take that action. But we do it, order again, if they should, we get what we want from DNR.
Mr. Attorney, the motion for table, if that's what the motion's going to be, can we do it for seven and eight? Or do it individually, separately?
I think we probably do it together.
Together. Okay, well, I'll accept it. Love you.
That's another question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
We've talked about possibly Lee Barnes actually making herself available to address the council and ask questions and that kind of thing. I know she's not available to be here in person at least several, which I think is too far away. We need to wait for the several. Larry had mentioned that in a conversation he and I had, a possibility of maybe a conference call with her to, is that still open?
Yes, and I was communicating with Ms. Burns this afternoon, and we glad to have that suggestion. You know, we have a work job coming up. And again, we take advantage of the comment, perhaps if we're scheduled for minutes, if we could do something prior to that scheduling workshop, instead of that conference call, maybe have a special call workshop between the two, for, you know, time enough for us to get on the call with Ms. Burns. You'll have that information in that workshop. Now, then, what we have to do, what I would anticipate, is based upon the conversation with Ms. Burns and the workshop, hopefully, council would be able to put something together that we could look at to then actually present to DNR for their review and formal recommendations. And then to take those, if necessary, make a tweaking to the local proposal, and then get it on down to plan zone.
I was looking at my calendar, Mr. Mayor, and our October workshop is October seventeen. I've just taken thirty days as they will come. If we were to have something that council would have to decide that night, okay, or for the next week. So thirty days from like a week after our workshop takes us to the week of, the week before Thanksgiving, which is November twenty-first. I mean, if we meet on seventeen, we get an ordinance drawn up within a week, then we submit that, then we down to the twenty-first of November, then it's got to come back to plan zone for another thirty days, and you're down to Christmas, so.
That's unreal. Let me ask something. Do we have a conference call where nobody has to be in one place? We get the newspaper on there, if Frank wants to be on the conference call, and then the five council people call in to the, we have one of those council things, don't we? We used to have it here with Ms. Mary.
Yeah, we've done that.
And let's have a council thing, and let's do it right away.
Mayor, we talked about that, and I think the best way to handle that is to advertise a public conference call with mayor, council, and DNR. We'll schedule that conference call for municipal courtroom, and we'll set a phone in here that would allow the conference call to take place now.
Does that mean we can call in as well? We don't have to have a physical meeting.
Right, that's right. But I don't believe, as far as calling in for any meeting, there has to be those circumstances under the statute.
Where you can do it only twice a year, and it comes to follow on the same time.
Right. So I would really suggest that we get something, we go together here in municipal courtroom, and then it goes on the phone.
Well, let's do it quick. Do you agree with that?
Absolutely.
Let's do it real quick on that.
I will plan.
Okay.
She has made the comment that Tifton's historic preservation guidelines are the, that's the example that they use when they're working with other communities to either establish historic districts or create historic preservation commissions. So if we are the best in the state, I want to make sure that what we do allows us to maintain that status. Because that's, I mean, I didn't know that until this, this, you know, this has been a real revelation for a lot of things. So I'm just going to make sure that we have her in the, and she's the expert, so I think that's the only thing we have her involved in.
Let's see how quick we can, and I think that's the feeling we all follow, right? Quickly on this.
However, if we've got to establish a date.
Yeah.
All right. So we're looking at workshop days, and we're looking at regular meeting days, and you've got to have sixty days probably to do this for planning and zoning and the state. And if we did it from today, sixty days take you down to December, after the December meeting. So I don't see if I'll be able to do this from January. But I may be wrong.
You'll be...
I mean, our decisions are going to have to be made.
Yes.
And the community will know what our decision is.
Sure.
But then there will be other public workshops that...
Planing zone, that's usually the special call meeting.
Okay.
So that's kind of thirty-day period generally.
Okay.
I would think that once we, once we have something in place, we could probably get a meeting with plan zone within two weeks. I'd assume we have fifteen days, that's two weeks.
Could we make, we have our call with her as late as the end of this week?
Mm-hmm.
Possible. I would leave her an email tonight.
Okay.
For purposes of scheduling, is it possible for council to have a meeting within this week sometime?
You're looking like I'm...
I'm a moment. I'll make a call.
I know we can't do it tomorrow, that's too soon, but Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, we could work within that, within those three days for anyone that's not available, either of those three days.
I'll make my schedule work.
I can do it Wednesday afternoon or Wednesday night evening. I think I might be okay, you know?
So Wednesday morning, Thursday, Friday. That's what we shoot.
Is that, did you say morning?
Wednesday morning.
That sounds great.
Thursday or Friday.
Wednesday morning.
And we'll just make here, have the call.
That's right.
And conduct the record.
Let me ask a question, though. If we table this to like the December first meeting, have we got any flexibility in changing that? We can change it again? At a call meeting, we can say?
Right now, you are tabling these two ordinances, which probably will not be the ones that you're going to want to adopt.
Right.
So basically, what I would envision, if you're tabling these two ordinances to a date cert, you're going to know before long that these are not what you want. So really, what you're probably going to be doing is going along the parallel track with, you know, adopting new ordinances that you do like, while these old ones are going to be tracking along to deny. See what I mean? So I don't see that there would be a problem once these come up to December one, let's say, whenever our first meeting is December. I see these things being voted on and not to, where you're probably, then we vote on probably some new ordinance that we may...
Well, then December second is our December regular meeting. Will be my last meeting. Unless there's a cloud meeting in December.
There is a workshop in December.
I'd say December the second, probably will give plenty of time to address these two. And hopefully have something in place that we can be looking at, maybe, maybe not adopting, but maybe at the workshop, we might have a call meeting December, and I think that's something.
Yeah, this has really been a slow process, but in the future, we're going to know to bring our partner with the NRT in on this thing early. And just a lot of things, it's just a sluggish, so next time, I think we'll move a little quicker.
Well, I would like to make that we table this until December second, the regular city council meeting.
Do we have, we have a motion, can I do? What we want to know?
Motion to table.
Give me a second.
There's a motion to table, please, until December second.
Oh, that's fine. You can put a question.
We ask our questions before we pass them.
Oh, yeah, okay. Exactly. Okay. Yeah, all right. So that's, that's the motion.
It has not been seconded.
It hasn't been seconded, has it?
Has not.
No, ma'am, it hasn't been seconded.
Fine.
That's why I... Now, we have a second. Any further discussion? Now, I'm thoroughly confused. No, I understand what we're doing here. Okay, no further discussion? All in favor, please sit if I will raise your right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous, Ms. Ronan. In other business, item number nine is the approval of the RFP for the Tiff Theater to the ECB Pro Sound System. Okay, we have this young woman right here, Stephen, if you'll give us the scoopy on this.
We sent out the second RFP, we had all worked in, but the second one, we had four vendors come back, others for three of them, and a little bit on Alphabell Pro at forty-two thousand and nine hundred and ninety-one dollars, and that is staff recommendation for the sound system for the Tiff Theater.
Where are they from?
He had a compact.
Do we have any local vendors that fit in on this?
We did have one, it was at, it was at fifty thousand and nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
When he got local, he had preference, he was still out of the...
He was way high.
He was way high.
Seven thousand and nine hundred dollars.
Okay, I think I see now.
Mayor, if you recall, this is the latest item, we had forty thousand and fifty dollars. And this is tourism dollars that's paying for this.
That was my question. Tourism dollars that's paying for this.
That's tourism dollars, Frank. Tourism dollars.
Not general fund tax dollars?
Not general fund tax dollars.
And if you recall, when we had a meeting earlier, there was discussion about the sound system, and just your comment was that it's pretty much shot.
I wouldn't want to swing on.
But anyway, we didn't need to replace the sound system, and this allows us to have quality events in the theater with a wireless sound stereo sound, if you will, and we can move forward.
Okay.
Well, I would like to say that we need some financials on the Tiff Theater, on money that has been spent, including this. So maybe at the next workshop, somebody could provide some financials on the expenses of the Tiff Theater.
Would be absolutely a lot of trouble.
Because it is an enterprise one.
Okay, we're going to need a motion on this item number nine. I'll need a motion.
Okay, I move there will be a, the bid for ECB for the sound system of Tiff Theater.
I hear a second. You can use a second. You made the motion.
Yeah, I'm always...
You made the motion.
I know.
Is there not a second on the table? This starts for like a second.
Okay.
Let me suggest that we, I guess we revisit this, maybe it was too much money, whatever, but...
What was the budget?
Forty thousand. But I.
It's two thousand. He's just saying that.
The, uh, all of the business that we, the first time, first round, we went out, you know, then we were paying way over what we pledged to get for it, and this one was supposed to seem to be had, that specification, the, the bill would have, just about twenty-nine hundred dollars, but almost three thousand of the budget. It was, it was what we asked for.
Well, I tell you, I, I know that you said inside the enterprise funds, the budget item, but no matter where the money's coming from, I think that's too high of a dollar amount. Stephen or Larry, can y'all send me what you're asking for on that? To make the specs. Well, I know, it's, it's gone down.
Awesome.
Yeah, my battery's out up here. So I could see that, I just, that's, that's a lot of money. It's just a lot of money.
With this efficient, as long as for me to give, Mr. Mayor, what I've got right here in my book, I'll be glad to hand it to him right now. That's okay? I've got it right here, y'all.
Just giving that back.
Okay.
One of the bills is asked for hundred and nine thousand dollars.
Yeah, I saw that one, I looked under there. Wow. Okay, then, moving on, consider amendment to customer service policy, utility disconnect fees to fifty. And I think, what, what are they now, Ms. Sonia?
They're forty, fifty, and eighty. They are graduated. And the reason that we're coming for you is, is because our new utility billing system is about to go online. It does not accept a graduated level. It has to be one fee. If you'll look in your packets, you'll notice I did a little survey of the surrounding area, and I think fifty dollars is very much in keeping and less in some communities than some communities. It, it does the public cost to go out and disconnect and reconnect, but we feel that is a fair.
So we're going to be losing money when you come to the eighty part, but we're going to be gaining on the regular forty part. And so we've reached the medium of fifty dollars, which we think is fair. Okay.
I will make a motion to approve this, and then I have discussion.
Okay, I have a motion. I need a second.
Thank you, excuse me. Get a little monitoring, I'll be here.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion, a second. All right, any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
On page ninety-two of our agenda, in the payment procedures, it says, I'm not sure that's penalty, it says ten days from the billing day to pay without penalty. I think what it needs to say is that it's ten days, that this bill is a monthly bill following the month of non-payment. And strengthen that out for me, Ron, because we don't pay it off until I've not paid it for thirty days, right?
Right. Well, it's almost four weeks. So where are you reading that?
Page ninety-two.
It's page about twelve in the actual question.
It's page about twelve.
That'd be under the general billing services, Mary Ann.
Right, and very much received.
That's without penalty. After ten days, it becomes late. It's not subject to disconnect, but it does become late, and we have a ten percent penalty on that.
After ten days?
Yes.
Okay, and that is, and it also says from the billing day.
Yes.
So that means if it's billed on the third of the month, I might not get it the mail on the fifth, and then I'll have eight days.
And Sheila, can you respond to that?
Y'all explain that to me better. Because I was like, eight days is enough.
Okay, where'd you put? Second part, you confused them.
Right here. When do they receive the penalty? After the billing day. Right, so what is this? That'll count like a gun. Yes, true.
Because you have a due date.
Right, right. Second, you did, we're doing it this Thursday, and you have, we build on Thursday, meaning month of November, it'll be doing it on the Saturday, November next month. We do second, third, fourth, fifteenth.
But that is incorrect, we will look at that. Thank you for pointing that out.
So I will recommend that we deny this.
Well, it's, we're not, we're not asking you to adopt this portion, it's the disconnect fees, that's the only thing.
Excellent.
Just to change the disconnect fee.
Yes.
That's absolutely correct. So I can go to the lawyer.
Well, I tell you, our, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Our, really, our water bill system, our whole system for senior services is really aggressive, it really is. I still today get phone calls from folks that say, hey, listen, you know, within eighty dollars, it's a lot of money. Have we not looked at just keeping it at forty dollars, the late fee?
Well, we're trying to recoup some of the cost, and we're still not recuing it. I mean, but that's a decision that you'll option.
I mean, I mean, we're here providing a service to people, and they're relying on the city, you know, we, we shouldn't be out to say, hey, let me get them, they would get them.
It's not a late fee, it's a reconnect fee.
Reconnect fee, I understand that, and that, you know, goes to offset, I'm sure fuel and expenses of a person to go out.
Well, some of the things that we need to take into consideration is when someone is first disconnected, we waive that fee. Okay? Things happen to folks, but our biggest issues are with people who are consistently disconnected, and that's when we really have to recoup the cost.
Is there?
And we are here for about service, but we are also here to operate a business, this is an enterprise.
What is the, the statute of limitation on the reset of their one-time waiver? Is it reset once a year, or is it the life hood of their account with the city?
It's once, once a year. We basically look at.
So once a year.
Right, we look at your payment history.
Okay.
If you've been a good paying customer, of course, we honor that for you.
So they could get cut off once a year and waive.
Right.
Outside of that, you're proposing it be fifty dollars each time.
There are not five ways to pay, so it's, you know, it's not like they came down here at six o'clock and tried to pay with clothes, they could at the drop box, they could have a five, and then it's, and try them all for.
We are not looking to penalize them. What we've done is we've tried to work with every, everyone who's had an unusual situation. You know, we, we don't just automatically throw the switch on.
Right, I know you don't, Ron, I know you're there, the big switch. I just want to make sure we're looking out for our people, you know, our citizens, and making sure that, you know, we do what's right by them personally.
We've, as you well know, we, we, well, we've been over backwards to work with people to, to cause this little negative impact on their lives and costs. This, this is official by leaders, if you will, and those are the ones who try to get their attention and decrease that.
And it has worked to a degree, but there's a group out there that doesn't matter what we do.
We have people coming and paying the eighty dollar late fee.
Every month.
Every month.
Every month, for a forty dollar bill.
That's wild.
Where's the candy, you're saying serious?
And that's right.
Hey, an eighty dollar bill every month.
Eighty dollar late.
I mean, eighty dollar late.
No.
They're paying a hundred and fifty, is what they're doing.
And it's going through the month of the month, January, February, March.
So now it will be fifty.
Okay.
So we're trying to citizens. We graduated in effort to deter it, but it really did not.
Well, I just know there's still a lot of, you know, when we switched, you know, we got the third-party agency, you know, doing the billing out of Columbus, and then we, we got the aggressive payment schedule, a lot of people were caught off guard by that, you know, and then we, we had an aggressive graduated disconnect fee schedule. So I just want to make sure that we, I mean, I understand why people abuse the system, but that's going to happen. We're still at the end of the day here providing a service to them, and, and, well, I just want to make sure we continue to do that.
Can I ask a question? Am I allowed to ask a question?
No.
I've had a lot of people ask me, why an outside billing agency bills and why don't we do it internally? I, I would guess my answer would be, maybe save you money, but I wanted to ask you all why it is. Now, a lot of people ask me that.
It is a huge cost savings.
It is, yes.
Right.
It is printing.
Yes, it's just the printing.
We do billing internally, but we have a couple that prints our bills and basically mounts them for us, and then we have a lockbox service that the bank, Sonova's bank provides that they actually receive all the bills and they mail in, and then they process them and give us a good one.
Okay, let's, now, of course, you asked a question. Wes, do you have a question you want to ask? Keep it fair. Well, I want to tell both of you something. Y'all, y'all see how Mary Ann called us? That's one of the, one of the many, many things that's going to be missed when she's gone. She researches everything. I'm not going to, I'm not going to talk about my other three, I won't talk about me, I tell you what, she, she pulls, puts me out of stump the way she researches stuff.
I had noticed that earlier on, when I get my billing each month, that word went correct, and I, it puzzled me, because, you know.
Well, that's not what I'm talking about right now, Tim. What I'm talking about now is you two guys got some big shoes to be in here, so. We're going to move on now to item number eleven.
I have shoes.
Oh, I thought we took that away. I thought there was something wrong with it, we weren't going to do it. I'm sorry, your motion was?
It was to approve the fifty dollar utility disconnect.
Okay, I'll need a second.
Wait, what second?
Two seconds.
Then we discuss it.
And then we're discussing, now, all in favor, please, sit and raise your right hand, say aye. Aye. And that is unanimous. Item number eleven is a discussion of minutes of six, twenty-eight, thirteen. What is that?
It's on our agenda. At the last workshop, you requested that we bring those minutes back in case anyone wanted to reconsider them. Those are the ones where changes were made.
Oh.
Those were, that was the budget meeting where the statements by Jordan McPray and my needs, there were some statements that were not denied, but we said the statements that were added, they were added.
That's right.
So I did review the, I reviewed the tape to make sure of that, that was the request, telling you to three and five seconds.
Well, then, and I'm the one that, that wanted to change, let me speak to it.
Your kid.
I felt like, and, and, we're just going to talk about, I felt like what Julie said, to be the five mills, that was, that was very favorable for her. Motion for three. Now, Mayor, Ms. Sonia, what do you think? Do you think that had any connection with that motion? Do you think that had any significance or importance? And I'll face her.
I don't think that I'm, I should interject in that, but you're the ones who have to determine what you feel is important.
But you're the one that's always put stuff in the minutes, and you, you didn't put that, so I would question it, and, because I felt like it was very important, she made a very passionate plea, and I felt like that should be realistic, but at, you know, at this point, I'm flexible. I mean, it's going to make a lot of headache, then, so be it.
It's whatever you all like, I, I gave you two options. I put the original set in there, there, that's designated as item number one, and then I put the amended set as item number two. It's up to you all to whether you want to change it back.
I don't have a problem necessarily with leaving it in there. The mayor and I, we, we talked about it, and I'm okay with it. I just want to make sure that in the future, as we have minutes that come before the council, that we discuss it publicly amongst the five of us.
Yes.
And that any changes, additions, deletions, et cetera, take place at this table amongst the five of us persons.
I would go the old-fashioned way. I didn't know any different, and I appreciate Julie, you know, bringing this up, and Rob, our attorney, and, so now we could go straight from here. So Julie's okay with it, I'm okay with it, everybody all right? Moving forward. So would you leave it in there? Okay. Um, well, that's the end. Well, listen, once again, thank y'all for coming, those y'all that got exposed, we appreciate it, glad to have y'all here. And, what's that, the legal way, what was you to say?
Maybe in the jury.
Maybe in the jury, subject to call, I could never remember that. Thank y'all, thank everybody.